Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good morning and I want to welcome you, good afternoon. Let's start that over. Good afternoon. I want to welcome you to the December 3rd, 2012 rescheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Pastor William Andrews of the Heart of Mercy Community Church of the Nazarene located in the Mercy Drive corridor of the Pine Hills community. This ministry has been in existence for 37 years and Pastor Andrews has served the congregation since 2003. So Pastor, we came at the same time roughly. He and the church are involved in numerous community service projects and missions including the Mercy Drive Initiative with First Pres, the Jobs Partnership, and the Mercy Drive Achievers Club which provides after-school programs and bus transportation for children in the area. After the invocation, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance today by District 3 Commissioner Robert Stewart. If everyone could please stand.
Dear Father, we come before you. We're thankful, Lord, that we're here today and we know that it's but by grace and mercy. And we pray for this body here, Lord, the leaders of our community and, Lord, that their decisions which impact each and everyone. We ask, Lord, that you be given, that they be given wisdom and that it be done in an impartial way that so that everyone is impacted by what is decided here today. I ask, Lord, that you protect our leaders, that you also protect our city, watch out over our country, our state. And we ask, Lord, for your grace and your mercy than the discernment that is given to them, that it will be decisions and choices that they would make that will bring honor and glory to you. And pray all of this, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Madam Clerk, if you could, let me, let's see, let me call the meeting to order and if you would call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linum?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Let's take up for consideration the minutes from the workshop of general review and city council meetings of November 5th. Meeting by, motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicated, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move all right into our awards, presentations, and recognitions. And I want to call on my home county sheriff, Bobby Hansel, to make a presentation relating to our re-creditation for the Orlando Police Department. Sheriff, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you having me up here. I also brought with me Chief Pete Marcus from your neighboring Edgewood Police Department.
Chief, glad to have you here as well.
I'm, in September of this year, at our Florida Accreditation, Commission on Accreditation, had their annual, actually their quarterly meeting where we award agencies who are in the accreditation process with re-accreditation and accreditation. And it was our honor to review the accreditation process that was submitted to us from the Orlando Police Department and award them for re-accreditation with the Excelsior status, which means they've been re-accredited five times since their original re-accreditation. And it was a flawless report. It's one that the city government should be proud of, the Orlando Police Department, but more than that, the community should be proud because it meets every standard, over 251 standards, that they have accomplished or exceeded that they met and they were awarded this prestigious award. So it was my, it was my pleasure to be there in September as Vice Chair of the Commission. And before I get off and we do anything, one of your citizens and fellow police chiefs wants to say a few words also. Chief Marcus.
Thank you. I sit on the commission also and actually this area has three commissioners of the 12, but in addition to being a chief in a neighboring city, I'm also a long-term resident of Orlando, the city of Orlando downtown, actually. Commissioner Sheehan and I are very familiar. I'm also a homeowner's president. But I would be remiss if I didn't stand up here and say to you that the Orlando Police Department under the leadership of Chief Rooney is just an excellent agency and me as a resident and you as the elected officials from the city should be extremely proud to have an agency such as this policing this jurisdiction. They do a great job.
And I'd like to add one more thing. This was accomplished in spite of Chief Rooney. Really. But it is quite an honor. It shows what professional standards that are met by the Orlando Police Department. It was, it's a great honor to award them re-accreditation.
Well, Sheriff and Chief, Chief Rooney said he wanted to have you guys come present this to the department on behalf of the accrediting agency rather than have him present it to himself. So we definitely appreciate you coming in for the kind remarks and we are in fact extremely proud and confident about our Orlando Police Department and their ability to keep our citizens safe and to be, to interact with the citizens in a very meaningful and pleasant way. So for those of you who don't know, I grew up in Osceola County and K.O. Murphy was the sheriff then, Sheriff. Okay, next up is Richard Forbes who is going to be presenting our 2013 Historic Preservation Calendar Photographic Image Contest winners. Richard?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Commissioners. I'm Richard Forbes, Historic Preservation Officer for the city. The Orlando Historic Preservation Board's 2013 Calendar Photo Contest has once again been a great success. And we're here today to thank all those that submitted their photos and to showcase the winners of the competition. The Historic Preservation Board has produced a calendar as an educational tool since 1989 and this is the 18th photo competition. So the 2013 calendar celebrates the Lake Adair/Lake Concord National Register of Historic Places District. This community's rich history is something that all of us here in Orlando and central Florida have treasured for years. And now, the rich history of this community has been recognized at the national level as well. The district was placed on the National Register of Historic Places by the United States Department of the Interior on December 30th of 2011. The National Register of Historic Places is the official list of the nation's historic places worthy of preservation. Authorized by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, the National Park Service's National Register of Historic Places is a part of a program to coordinate and support public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, and protect America's historic and archaeological resources. The Lake Adair/Lake Concord Historic Residential District, it's a mouthful, I know, is part of the much larger College Park neighborhood and comprises more than one historic subdivision with the majority of these plats being filed in the 1920s as part of the Florida land boom. However, as a result of the bust of the real estate market in 1927, settlement remained scattered throughout this part of the district during the late 1920s. However, construction began again in the late 1930s and early 1940s and as the economy recovered, few vacant lots remained within that district. A variety of styles reflecting architectural trends from the early to mid 20th century are represented in this district. For the photo competition, the contestants were given the boundaries of the district and simply instructed to go out and capture some images. And the Historic Preservation Board then gave them to the Publications Committee and they were charged with the difficult task of blind judging the many wonderful images submitted. Many thanks to McCoy Federal Credit Union for their very generous sponsorship for both the printing and photo competition for the 2013 calendar. And I want to thank the Historic Preservation Board and the members of the Publications Committee as well. It's my pleasure now to present the 13 winning photos for the 2013 calendar. The cover photo was taken by Mark Engler and shows the home at 722 Alameda Street. The architect for this Mediterranean revival-style home was Maurice Cressley and the main house was constructed in 1930. The photo for January was taken by Brenda Cohen and features 908 Edgewater Drive. This home is an important example of the Tudor revival style. This house is interesting because it was constructed in 1928 by contractor A.E. Arthur, whose son Alan Arthur is still practicing architecture here in the city. The image for February was captured by Paul Hennessy and shows 1030 Lake Adair Boulevard. This was designed by noted architect James Gamble Rogers in the Georgian colonial revival style and built in 1938 by contractor H.C. Coen. This house was built for R.D. Keane, who was the son of Orlando pioneer's William "Inkizi" Prescott Keane. Keane was a leader in Florida citrus industry and one of Orlando's greatest benefactors. He contributed the land to the city that became Ben White Raceway, gave gifts to hospitals and churches, and in 1965, he donated $100,000 to the YMCA. The March photo was taken by Laine Russo and shows the Mediterranean revival-style house at 833 Seville Place. This two-story style residence was designed as well by James Gamble Rogers II. The house was built for citrus grower Harold Stein and the turret has a conical roof and a fanciful bullfighter weather vane. April's photo was taken by Gail Peck and features the residence at 1001 Seville Place. This house was constructed in 1953. It's been changed a little bit over the years, but it still maintains the style and features characteristic of the mid-century modern ranch house. The May photo is by Tom Driscoll and this shows the residence at 803 Lake Adair Boulevard. This is a superb example of the Italian Renaissance revival style and was built in 1927 for Ross Wynn. The red tile, hipped roofs, white stucco, the arched windows, and the large eve brackets are all elements of this revival style. The June taken, June photo was taken by Mark Sekman of our planning department and shows the Craftsman-style house at 800 Putnam Avenue. This house was originally built in 1918 for Cyrus and Evelyn Hatch and this was originally located on Lake Dot and it was moved to this location in 1988. The elaborate upper window patterns, decorative eve brackets, and that broad front porch are all hallmarks of the Craftsman style. The July photo was taken by Paul Hennessy and shows the house at 712 Lake Adair Boulevard. This house was constructed in 1997, so while not an historic home, the detailing, massing materials and such of this contemporary version of the Mediterranean revival style allow this structure to blend in beautifully with the other historic homes along Lake Adair. The photo for the month of August was taken by John Bailey and shows the house at 1005 Edgewater Drive from Lake Concord. This Mediterranean-style residence is one of the most architecturally significant houses in the neighborhood and was designed by David Hire of Charleston, South Carolina. The house was built in 1928 for Grace Phillips Johnson, who was, of course, a great benefactor of the arts and culture in Orlando. The September photo was taken by Wayne Schneck and shows the Mediterranean-style house at 1,000 Lake Adair Boulevard. The house was constructed in 1936 for citrus grower Joseph Gentile Jr. The October photo was taken by Penny Sekman and shows the Mediterranean revival-style house again at 722 Alameda Street. This photo highlights the incredible turret and chimney details. The architect Maurice Cressley designed the house with details such as the rough stucco, the wrought iron, the grills, tile, and arched openings that make this structure so easily identified in this Mediterranean style. The photo for November was taken by Mariabel Santiago of the rear colonnade of 1030 Lake Adair Boulevard, one you don't often see. In 1987 interview, Architect Rogers stated that this house was one of the most representative and elegant of his designs. Rogers felt that the dramatic circular stairway he designed for the interior was one of his best interior features ever built. Rogers designed over 100 residences in Orlando and Winter Park using these picturesque, romantic revival styles including English Tudor, Greek Revival, Colonial Revival, of course Mediterranean Revival, and French Eclectic. The December photo was captured by Gail Peck and shows the residence at 505 Peachtree Road. This is again a house by James Gamble Rogers II and he designed this house in eclectic style which has both French and Dutch colonial features. Built in 1934, this house is historically significant as the home of prominent Orlando civic worker and legislator Beth Johnson. In 1953, Johnson became the first chair of the newly-formed Orlando Municipal Planning Board. Johnson was subsequently elected to the Florida House of Representatives in 1957 and elected to the Florida Senate in 1962, becoming Florida's first female senator. Senator Beth Johnson Park at 59 South Ivanhoe Boulevard was dedicated to her memory in 1973. The 2013 calendar photos show the rich history of College Park's Lake Adair/Lake Concord neighborhood and are reminders of the important role that this area has played in Orlando's past and will surely play in the future. I want to thank all the photographers that submitted their work. It was really difficult choosing the 13 photos this year and there are boards out front that show all of the photos that were submitted by all the different photographers. The calendars are currently available in the rotunda and right outside here. They're also available at the Orange County History Museum and Lou Gardens. So Mayor, if you would join me in presenting the certificates, I'd also like to have the winners come down and also Alvin Cowan's President of McCoy Federal Credit Union.
So the city's family has been recognized in a number of ways. Is a family-friendly workplace. We were just recognized by OBJ as a healthy place to live and we have a new one for the first time. We have been awarded a, or have been, or receiving an award as the best workplace for commuters as designated by the National Center for Transit Research. And since we've been such strong supporters of Sunrail and Link System, it would only be appropriate that we are one of the workplaces that is friendly for transit as well. So FJ, would you come up and tell us about it?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to announce that the National Center for Transit Research recently designated the city of Orlando as a best workplace for commuters. The city earned this designation because of our commitment to encouraging alternative transportation modes which in turn reduces congestion and air pollution. We promote this by providing free and expanded downtown transportation and transit circulator systems, long-term secure bicycle parking and shower facilities for cyclists, ride-sharing and emergency ride-home programs, and by offering subsidized transit passes for our employees. As part of this designation, the city agrees to continue to look for ways to improve commuter benefits for its employees with the goal of reducing single-occupant vehicle trips. With this, I would like to introduce Courtney Miller, Program Manager with Rethink, to present the award to the city.
Thank you, FJ. Good afternoon, everybody. As FJ mentioned, my name is Courtney Miller and if we haven't met before, hello. I am the local Program Manager for Rethink, which is your regional commuter assistance program, and we ask people to rethink how they get to work. We are very grateful for the city of Orlando's commuter benefits because it definitely makes it much easier for people to take that leap and ride the bus, carpool, bike, walk, even vanpool and carpool to work when they know that their employer understands those benefits and how it can help them save money, but also reduce traffic congestion, improve air quality, and ultimately conserve natural resources. Julie Bond, who is the Project Manager for this national program, which actually is based at USF over in Tampa, somewhat ironically was delayed on I-4 due to some traffic incidents. So on her behalf and all of the Rethink program and the Florida Department of Transportation, I wanted to thank the city of Orlando and present this plaque to the mayor and thank you all.
Okay, I'm going to move right into the mayor's update. So Commissioners, our city council meeting scheduled for Monday, December 17th has been moved to Wednesday, December 19th. I'm sorry for the late notice on that. I am actually an elector pursuant to the United States Constitution to the Electoral College and I will be traveling to Tallahassee on Monday, the 17th to cast a electoral vote for the president. I'd like to begin our meeting by remembering our first and most active Ola volunteer, Oscar Alicia, who passed away last week after battling pulmonary fibrosis. I'm extremely grateful for everything that Oscar did for our community. He gave generously of his energies and talents and worked tirelessly to improve the quality of life for all our Hispanic residents. I know he is very close with a number of the Commissioners and our thoughts and prayers go out to Oscar's family and friends during this difficult time. I want to wish Commissioner Stewart a happy belated birthday. He celebrated his birthday last week, November 27th. Shall we? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Stewart. Happy birthday to you. Seems like everybody on the commission has had a birthday in the last month or so. Okay, you may be wondering why I'm wearing this red Tulsa jersey. I made a friendly wager with the mayor of Tulsa on the UCF-Tulsa game, which was the Conference USA championship game, and we bet that the mayor of the city in which the university that did not win that game would wear the successful university's jersey to the next council meeting. And we also bet an edible, you know, that's generally the traditional thing, so I bet a Florida key lime pie against his Oklahoma pecan pie. And the mayor of Tulsa and his staff will be enjoying a nice key lime pie from the tap room, which is even on its way. So I guess I need to stand up and take a quick picture, so.
But don't smile.
Very tight.
And that's all the mayor. He didn't put any pads on his shoulder.
There you go.
So I'm pretty sure they sent me the kickers jersey. Once you're in this thing, it's very difficult to get back out. All right, so Go Knights as they move on to the Big East Conference. They played their last game in Conference USA. We wish it would have been more successful that they reached the championship game four times in the last, I guess, seven or eight years and won two and lost two. And that was the most championship game appearances of any team in Conference USA during that timeframe. So they've had a successful run there and we wish them well in the Big East and the Beef O' Brady Bowl in St. Petersburg. In 2008, the Orlando Police Department established a new youth mentoring program called Operation Positive Direction and currently there are 35 OPD officers serving as youth mentors through the program. And I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Robinson to give us an update on the most recent activities of Operation Positive Direction. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, City Council. On November 22nd, this past Thanksgiving Day, we had the opportunity to go out and interact with residents of the Metro West Nursing and Rehab Center. The Orlando Positive Direction Group is a youth mentoring program that we have at the agency and it's currently being led by Officer Joe Lundey. And his primary assignment is a school resource officer at Edgewater High School. But on this day, Operation Positive Direction joined together to share some time, do arts and crafts with the senior citizen residents of the Metro West Nursing and Rehab Center. The Operation Positive Direction team met at the, at the center approximately 10:00 AM and our goal was to show the seniors that we care. Desserts were prepared and bought in for the nursing home staff members as well. Operation Positive Direction members are parading groups with the senior, with the senior resident to make holiday cards and sharing conversation. We had 11 adult mentors and 12 youth mentees to attend this session. And again, this was on Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day morning that we did this. While our team assisted the seniors in making holiday cards, we could see the appreciation and happiness expressed by our elderly seniors. And particularly at the table that I shared with Mrs. Armstrong, she indicated that her career profession was that of a homemaker, raising her family and taking care of her kids. And she assisted us in tracing the templates for the making of the cards and interacting with the student mentee that was at the table. with the student mentee that was at the table. And I will tell you, I recall her smiling and laughing as she conversed with the young lady who was probably 60 years her junior. Let me hear, I'm sorry. We do have some photos. I believe they may have them teed up. And so this group was enjoying themselves as we did this. The holiday cards that we made were targeted for Thanksgiving and the Christmas holidays. We wanted to show the staff as well how much we appreciate their dedication and care for our senior citizens. There were approximately 40 cards that were made at this event. The event lasted about 12:00 PM with the serving of desserts for the staff members. We also had to understand that they had to get the Thanksgiving holiday preparations for our seniors, so we had to get in and out in a timely manner. But it was great to see the joy of doing something for others. And in terms of the youth mentoring program, we wanted them to understand that this community service and the life skills that we share with them is all about giving back to the community, and the kids enjoyed it as well as the adult mentor volunteers. And we wanted to impart with them that sometimes sharing just a little time with those who are special to all of us makes a big difference in their lives. And I just want to say thank you for, thank you to Chief Rooney for supporting our endeavors with the Operation Positive Direction Mentoring Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.[703.82][703.82](applause) And we like to highlight the many things that our OPD and city family do outside of their specific job responsibilities. Okay, the holiday season is upon us, and this year I want to encourage everybody to go green for the holiday season and join us in our goal of making Orlando the most environmentally-friendly city in the southeast. And there are a ton of ways that you can go green for the Christmas holiday season, from, number one, just shopping locally for gifts, using LED lights on your house or your tree, recycling maps, scarves, paper bags, and newspapers as wrapping paper. There's just a ton of ways to do it, so visit greenworksorlando.com for more ways to go green this holiday season. Sadly, if you probably saw in the newspaper early Sunday morning, there was a pedestrian that was struck by a pickup truck on International Drive, and I think that continues to show the importance of our Best Foot Forward initiative, which is focused on preventing car pedestrian types of deaths and injuries in our community. Since our program launched, nearly 1,700 drivers have been issued warnings for failing to yield to a pedestrian at targeted intersections. OPD has cited almost 200 drivers with tickets or for violating the yield law, and the compliance rate has gone from 9% at the start of education to 38%, so a fourfold increase in compliance. So behaviors are changing. Think about 30 years ago, if we were sitting in this room, half of you would have a cigarette in your hand. And now you have to go outside, if at all, so maybe we can have that same type of behavior change in terms of making sure that pedestrians are safe in our community. And speaking of safety, the city of Orlando has just received recognition, recognition again, as a bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists, and we have received this award consistently since 2000, and we are currently home to more than 290 miles of urban biking trails, sign routes, and lanes. One more important transportation initiative that I'd like to highlight today, which is an agenda item, is to make way for the College Park Partnership to install an innovative bicycle parking system near Albert Park. This uniquely-designed bike rack will further enhance the aesthetic nature of the park and provide residents with a safe and stylish place to park their bikes and enjoy the amenities of College Park and Edgewater Drive. I want to thank Commissioner Stewart and the members of the College Park Partnership for leading this effort. Thank you, guys.[878.12][878.12](applause) And one initiative that I want to highlight today on our agenda, we are approving an economic development incentive that could bring 75 new high-value, high-wage jobs to our community. And many people don't know that the Golf Channel is headquartered right here in the city of Orlando, making it one of our larger international corporate headquarters. We recently named, renamed the street in front of the Golf Channel, Golf Channel Drive, ha-ha-ha, right? And they already have nearly 500 employees, and they will expand their operations by relocating the production teams that handle the management of their golfchannel.com and golfnow.com websites. In addition to the city of Orlando, they are considering Stanford, Connecticut, and if they choose Orlando, which I'm very confident that is going to occur, the company would increase its existing space in District 6, Commissioner Ing's, by 22,000 square feet, making a nearly $2 million investment in our community. And I would like to thank Jay Madera, Chief Financial Officer, and Dave Schaefer, Vice President for Communication, who are here with us today. Would you guys stand and be recognized?[955.12][955.12](applause) And we do appreciate your presence. We had the opportunity to celebrate a anniversary, I guess, as well as name the, rename the street, and I got to understand more about the history and Arnold Palmer's role in the actual start of the Golf Channel, so a great legacy from one of the icons in our community. Thanks for being here. Lastly, I'd note that we have a number of agreements under our housing section today that will provide funding for local entities, and through the grant process, we are able to distribute a good portion of federal funds that make a huge difference in our community. That, I will move on to the consent agenda, which is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and update you on important issues or events that are occurring in their districts, and we rotate who goes first in that regard, and today it is District 3 Commissioner, Commissioner Robert Stewart. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor, and let me start off on a sad note and offer my condolences to Oscar's family. A wonderful man, and had an opportunity to work with him down there in District 2, so he'll be missed. A couple of things I want to mention that we haven't had a chance to meet, and last time we met so quickly, I want to just cover a couple of quick things, and I promise we'll go through them very quickly. Holiday on the drive and the Albert Park decorations for College Park. Andrea, thank you very much. Kim, thank you for the work that y'all have done. The College Park Partnership puts some of the icicles in the light, in the trees in Albert Park, and it was a wonderful amenity for the holiday season. Thank you very much for doing that. And of course, Holiday on the Drive was an incredible success, thanks to your efforts. I appreciate that. Ivanhoe Village had their Jingle Eve Boat Parade and the Jingle Eve Shopping Event. That was another great event that continues to expand. Happy about that. And of course, I'll talk a little bit about the Bike Corral in just a minute. Recycling, the single-stream recycling is moving forward, and appreciate the support of the mayor and what we're doing in our city. And I want to say a special thanks to Mike Carroll and how flexible he has been in some of these multifamily locations. He's done a good job responding to the needs of our community, and I think he's another fine example of the quality of people that we have in our city, willing to accomplish the task, but still also be willing to be sensitive to the needs of our constituents. I appreciate that, so Rick, please pass on my regards to him. This week is the rollout in College Park and Fairview Shores and Spring Lake. Last week was the rollout in Rosemont. And again, if you want to know more information, cityorlando.net/solidwaste for the area. I think all of us have an impact on that. This Thursday is the dedication of the new facility, the new school at Princeton Elementary. If you get a chance to, please come, come help us celebrate our 86th birthday of Princeton Elementary. We get a chance to see a great new school, a great new asset in our community. So come join me, and we'll have a, do a little proclamation in their honor. Lou Gardens always has a great themed night. I just want to invite everybody to come for the 1938 original version of A Christmas Carol. It's going to be this Friday night. Please come, movie starts at 7:30. And Baldwin Park has the annual Festival of Lights this Saturday night, so please come join us there at 6 o'clock at the Village Center. And one thing we haven't talked about much, the American Legion is in the midst of their building program, or building fund, and they are doing a special event this weekend, the 9th, I guess, would be right. So please, if you get a chance to come out and enjoy a meal and buy some raffle tickets to help support their building fund. Really excited about the energy they've put into that. Couple of things on the agenda I'll share briefly. The Bike Corral, thank you, Andrea, thank you, Kim, for the work that y'all have done. Appreciate that. It's going to be a wonderful asset over there, and I appreciate your persistence in making it happen. And also, it's going to be a good, it's going to add a lot to the College Park community. I appreciate that. I want to also comment on the Lou Gardens matching grant, $25,000 matching grant. It's on Item G1 today. Thank you, Robert Bowden, if Robert's here, I'm not sure if he's here. There he is. Thank you, Robert, for your leadership in that. Appreciate that. It's kind of educational programs and existing programming. Appreciate your work there. And then later on during New Business, I'll get a chance to share a little bit about, ask your indulgence, counsel, for your help on making some things right in terms of some other stuff. So thank you very much, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move to District 4, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things on the agenda today. Item C2, the Orlando Immunology Center, while that is in District 3, that's something we've worked kind of on our borders along with Mills Park. There's a lot happening in North Mills Avenue corridor. It's really exciting, and I think there's just going to be a lot happening and a lot of redevelopment, and I think it really goes back to the original vision plan we did about 10 years ago, and it's just so exciting to see those things finally come to fruition. So Commissioner Ortiz, those vision plans do work. It takes a while, but they eventually get you where you need to be. On Item H1, the Bulletproof Vest Grant, very glad to see this, and I'm glad that the police are wearing their bulletproof vests when they're out in the community to make them safer. We just rededicated an area for George DeSalvia, who was an officer that was killed in line of duty. We certainly don't want to see that happen again, so glad to see that grant. And I'm delighted to see on Item I1, Rapid Response Contract for Weber Street Drainage, and anybody who drives on Bumbi Avenue between Colonial and Virginia, I know how bad it is, but first we have to fix the infrastructure underneath before we can repave, and I'm just delighted to see that we're finally making some progress on getting this fixed so we can get Bumbi, which is, everybody calls Bumpy Avenue, fixed finally. I just have one other, and I have one other thing to tease Commissioner Stewart about. You know, y'all, we had the Battle of the Barrel a couple of weeks ago, and we haven't had a council meeting since then, and Commissioner Stewart and Edgewater Drive, Edgewater High School did lose the Battle of the Barrel to Boone High School. Just wanted to say that. And doing a little football bragging, and Commissioner Stewart, you're just lucky that the Native American orange headdress I found in Phoenix was $500. Oh, you'd be wearing that right now.[1349.26][1349.26](laughter) Right? I did find one, but it was a little out of my price range, so...
Edgewater won the canned food drive.
Oh, that's okay.
That was the most important thing.
It was fixed.[1359.51][1359.51](laughter) But anyway, we had a little football bragging. I'm sure there'll be more of that. 'Tis the season, and it was a lot of fun, and thank you for inviting me to the game, Commissioner. On a sad note, Thornton Park resident Candy Reiser did die over the weekend. She was, she was the blonde lady that worked on the Doggy Dining Bill and did all that activism, great woman. Unfortunately, she did pass over the weekend, and our thoughts and prayers are with Candy's family. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District 5, Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you. Just a few announcements since we missed the last council meeting and the one before that, but I do wish everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday and a safe one. I do want to give some kudos to code enforcement, Orlando Police Department, and of course, OUC, and some of our staff here in the building on the Given Street project. Most of those apartments over there are boarded up. It has been almost two years of hell, and now we're in half hell because half of the place is gone, and we've got to work on the other half. But a lot of work has been done with OPD, closing that, closing down most of that, those residents and getting the kids out. Susan Harris and all else to get the kids out. OUC kept the utilities on until we can get most of those kids out, and then shut them down, boarded up the places for condemnation. That was a great thing in Rock Lake. So I want to say a real thank you to those people. Upcoming would be Orlando Police Department. Since I've been here 14 years, Orlando Police Department has had a Christmas party. I won't give the date because it's my invitation, but I have partnered with them for 14 years with Jackson, and I think the last two years maybe out of Mercy. So I want to say, the chief was here a minute ago, but I guess, well, you're good enough, chief, for me, baby. My big, my big guy. Chief, I want to say thanks for all those Christmas parties, and I do miss you out in Paramore. I used to come from church, both of us being in Paramore picking up trash. So send some of your other guys out there so I can meet up with them out in the street and do what you used to do. You know, they got to get used to working the streets. So I want to say a real special thanks to OPD in advance of the things they do for the community, Mayor. That was just a tiny bit what the chief just talked about on that issue. But that's my Gamma Sororities Metro Guardian, the rehab center, Chief Robinson. We have that nursing home also, and I love that little place, so thank you. I do want to, and I sort of told a little small audience this morning about Mayor Dyer. I hate to do this to him, but for, well, since he's been here every year, I never could figure out why the mayor always had an orange, and he always gave me a reason. And this year, I figured it out. He had on an orange tie, and he swore it belonged to, what's the name of the...
Florida Citrus Sports.
The Florida Citrus Sports.[1543.51][1543.51](laughter) And I said, "Mayor, I think you are a closet rattler." I'm a Wildcat, but every year, Florida Classic, he manages to have on orange and something. Not orange and green, but orange and, and not orange and blue as a Gator. So I finally discovered why he would never pull 14. Everybody knows it, I knew it, so I will act accordingly and say, "Hey, Mayor, we won."[1571.08][1571.08](laughter) "BCU won, you're out." So that was the Florida Classic. It was a great time here in Orlando.
Commissioner, I do kind of like that thing where the president does that, when the dark clouds gather and...
What did I tell you? He loves a little strike, strike, strike. Well, Wildcats eat rattlers.[1593.64][1593.64](laughter) We will strike you all.[1597.14][1597.14](laughter) I just had to tell everyone because I just finally learned on me what this was about. He was in the Senate a long time up there, so he kind of got used to Tallahassee and those rattlers. But this is about what's good for Orlando, too, and I like to talk a little trash at this time. But during the Florida Classic, we had a tennis tournament for the second year, and next year we'll have the tennis team from FAMU and BCU stay over. We awarded them $3,000 in scholarships for the tennis team. But I want to say a real special thanks to Rodney Williams, Afredo, 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 and at the Recreation Center, and all of their staff. Mayor and council, I had a chance to watch a tennis match that must have taken over an hour with city staff. We've got to teach those people how to play tennis and how to complete a match in less time. Boy, I just like, I mean, I didn't know what was going on. So it was a great time, so when you come to Orlando for football and great bands and music, you also have a chance to play tennis with some of the leagues that are local and the great staff over there, and it was just a fun day, great food, and it's another focus doing the Florida Classic. So thank you, Rodney and Afredo and all your staff. I do want to make one announcement. It may not be pertinent to most people here, but I wasn't at the National League of Cities past week, but for months, we've been working on a new executive director. Mayor Dyer, I don't know whether you know Clarence Anthony became the new executive director. We've been working on that for months and months and months since the summer, and he was given that job. Clarence Anthony is a former mayor of South Bay, Florida. He was one of the presidents of the Florida League of Cities, and it's a great move for the National League of Cities. So I want to congratulate them and Mike Siddick for our Florida League of Cities, who really took the leadership in making this happen. I just renewed respect for Mike Siddick.
You left off the most important aspect. He's also the father of Radel Anthony, a great Gator receiver.[1738.23][1738.23](laughter)
No, I didn't leave that off.[1741.14][1741.14](laughter) I don't know why people always want to tell me what I'm supposed to say.[1745.01][1745.01](laughter) No, no, Gators are okay. I do have my masters from Florida State. I believe it's the opposite of the University of Florida. Don't you think so? All right, I didn't leave it off. But he is married to a great Wildcat, Tammy.[1763.14][1763.14](laughter) So I won't leave that one off. I do want to tell you, the girls and I, Jan and, what's her name, Goose, Goose, Goose Tree, what's her name?
Jody.
Jody, Jody. We're going to get together, and we're going to have a new curb appeal of the block for District 5. We're going to start in Paramore, and the Home Depot is going to be one of our great partners. We didn't even have to ask them. There's one guy, well, he's going to bring some more guys, and that's Walter, but it's really about the girl power. We're getting ready to curb a hill of the block. So look forward to that. getting ready to curb the hill of the block. So look forward to that. And I want to say thanks to Frances. We're getting ready to meet with the Terry Street Homes and Deborah Girard. All the work we've done for months and months and trying to get things right. Just want to say a real special thanks for the work they're doing. And I believe, even though I couldn't get there, I was traveling. The Chocolate Nutcracker was December 1st with Mayor Page and his wonderful wife at Bob Car. So thank you everybody that I didn't recognize or see anything about, that I overlooked it because it's been weeks and weeks and weeks. The one thing I learned about not having meetings, it becomes almost insignificant. If you forget to say something two weeks ago, it's over. I just couldn't leave this thing off about Mayor Dyer. Now he's wearing a tussle or something, whoever that is. So next time, he has gotta wear that Wildcat thing. Don't come walking here with some state from Timbuktu. Well, we right here at Florida Classic. Next time, BCU prevails, you will wear the Wildcat colors, Mayor.
I'll do that.
And stop all of that craziness about orange and green. And you do not go Jones High. So let's get this straight. All of my council agenda items, I've already taken care of earlier this morning with Byron. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner. We'll move on to District 6. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Clarence Anthony obviously was a great choice to be appointed the new chief executive officer of the National League of Cities. And he was also a former president of the National League of Cities as well. Also during that conference, the city of Boston, the news media, the video news media, they did an excellent job of really highlighting the New England Patriots as they were going down into Miami to play during this football game on yesterday. And the one thing that they did was they interviewed the quarterback and the players and all on television. And they had so much excitement as they were talking about going down to Miami to play this game and hopefully they will win. And the one thing that they did talk about was the Miami quarterback and how great he was and how they had to deal with him and some of the other players, Reggie Bush. So a lot of energy went out in the media towards that particular game. And I'm saying that because it would be great to see our media focus on the Orlando Magic in that way and talk about how great they are and interview the players and the coaches just prior to a big game. You see what they did against LA on last night. They won. And so that's a great thing. And we should be proud and continue to encourage our teams, our national teams, to be the very best that they can be. And so those guys played their hearts out in LA and they won a game right on the home court there. So that was a great, great opportunity for the Magic. And while also at the National League of Cities Conference, I was elected as chaplain of the National Black Conference, National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials for NBC Leo. And that was a great thing for me there and a great honor to be a part of that particular board. Commissioner Linum has served as president of the NBC Leo and represented us very well during her tenure as president. And she continues to do that even as an immediate, as a past president. Item B8, the leases for the warehouse building located at 450736th Street for the Orlando Fire Department, Chief Miller. This is a great opportunity for us. And I really thank you guys for taking the opportunity to consolidate services for greater efficiency and to centrally locate certain services. So this is gonna help not only the city of Orlando, but this entire Central Florida region. And item C1, the resolution of the City of Orlando for supporting Central Florida's Open for Business Initiative. I support this agenda item because this Open for Business Initiative should be presented also as a workshop at the National League of Cities at one of its national conferences. At this year's conference at the National League of Cities, Congress of Cities and Exposition in Boston, Massachusetts, there was a workshop on promoting strong local economies entitled "Making Your City More Business Friendly." And I know that this particular initiative is one of those initiatives that would certainly benefit other cities throughout the nation. And it's something that, that this resolution and this business, Open for Business Initiative should be shared and recognized nationally for all of the great things that we do here in the city of Orlando. And item C1, I support the Golf Channel's Qualified Target Industry Tax Refund for its business expansion. Seventy-five jobs with an average of $75,000. And also substantial investment that you are investing in construction costs for your expansion there at the Golf Channel, $1.9 million. And thank you Mayor Dyer for all of your support on this issue as well. And I also support the additional funding for the Quick Action Closing Fund as an incentive that the Golf Channel does go through with this project with us here in Orlando. And thank you Jay Madera, the CFO for the Golf Channel, for being here and being supportive of us. I also want to talk about the seniors' Thanksgiving luncheon. On Wednesday, November 7th, 2012, I held my seventh annual District 6 Seniors Thanksgiving Luncheon at the Claudia Allen Senior Center. And this year, we had about 250 seniors that enjoyed this traditional Thanksgiving dinner. Thank you Mayor Dyer for giving greetings and being a part of this special event. And of course, you know, our seniors do love you there at the El Claudia Allen Center. We, we honor those seniors who have contributed a lifetime of dedication and care to their families and also to our community. Chef Eddie James of Chef Eddie's Restaurant located on Orange Center catered the event. And Minister Marion Wingster from Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church entertained us with spiritual songs. That was enjoyed by all. And I'd like to thank Universal Orlando Resort and Han Foundation for their corporate support of this event. And of course, Herb Williams, Brenda Clark, the management and staff at the Claudia Allen Center and the entire staff of the center for their help and assistance. And also my aide Cynthia Wilson and my police liaison officer Tia Pruitt. I hosted my third annual District 6 Seniors Thanksgiving Concert on Friday, November 23rd at L Bethel Temple of Orlando on Bruton Boulevard. This is turning out to be a very popular annual musical extravaganza which celebrates our District 6 seniors who have dedicated their lives for the benefit of our community. Those seniors that were presented with the distinguished service awards this year were Betty Chandler, Eccleston Elementary Media Manager, Bishop Thomas Shennott, Pastor Manchester, Commissioner Mabel Butler, John Jordan. He was one of the first Orlando black officers to join the Orlando Police Department in the early years as well. Marie B Palmer and Pastor Jesse L Ivory. And our entertainment included the featured stellar award winners, Doug and Melvin Williams of the Williams Brothers out of Mississippi, the Golden Heirs of Orlando who's celebrating their 60 years of service here in Orlando, Pastor James Bolton out of Mississippi as well, and Pastor Lee Hardeman who's a young pastor here in Orlando. We would like to thank our sponsors. Also, again, Universal Studios, Elite Financial Services, The Hope Church, thank you very much, WOKB Gospel Radio, and CMJ Resources and Development Group, Ms. Cora Miles Jefferson, and my aide Cynthia Wilson. I would like, along with Quality Lifestyle Enhancement Learning, Inc. to invite you to the District 6 Seniors inaugural Holiday Prom. And that's gonna be held this Friday, December 7th, at 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Dr. James R. Smith Center on 1723 Bruton Boulevard in Orlando. We're gonna feature live entertainment, refreshments, giveaways, wear some holiday attire. And if you really want to come, RSVP to Cynthia Wilson, my aide, at 407-246-3016. And thank you as one of our highlighted corporate sponsors, Care Plus Health Plans Incorporated. And I'm pleased to present my second annual Washington Shores Community Christmas Parade in celebration on Saturday, December 15th. The parade begins at 10:00 AM at the Dr. James R. Smith Center and ends with the Job Fair in celebration of Stopping, Stopping the Killing, Save the Children Rally with Reverend Reggie Scogner's with Walkabout Ministries. And we're gonna have a Job Fair also at the Hankins Park, which is at 1340 Lake Park Court. And we're looking to end the parade in the park along with the rally, along with the Job Fair. It's that time of season that people do need jobs and we want to do everything that we can to help people and bring some hope into their holiday season. Openings are still available for those that desire to participate in the Christmas Parade and also participate in our Job Fair. If you would, contact my office, Cynthia Wilson, 407-246-3016, and join us. And with that, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner. I am very surprised that you didn't mention the Walmart groundbreaking.
Oh no.
Thank you Mayor. And we had a wonderful Walmart groundbreaking at The Hope Property, at The Hope Church. Thank you Mayor. You know, I've been gone away at the NLC Conference in Boston there. And it was cold. So it's good to be back home in Orlando. And thank you for reminding me of that. Appreciate it very much.
No problem Commissioners. The other Commissioners are thanking me as well. We'll move to District 1. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you. Took the words right out of my mouth. All past and present activities in District 1, we try to put on our website. So I'd encourage everybody to go there. Two quick comments. One, also like to thank our folks at the Golf Channel for consideration of job creation. Jobs equal opportunity. And for Orlando to continue to grow, we have to create jobs. So thank you for that consideration. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate and thank Commissioner Ortiz for inviting me to the groundbreaking for South Semeron Business Partnership in mid-November. Again, one of the focuses of that initiative is for our businesses on South Semeron to prosper. As businesses prosper, they create jobs. We need jobs. So Commissioner Ortiz, thanks for your leadership on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you Commissioner. And we'll move to District 2. Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you Mayor. And thank you Commissioner Gray. He failed to say that. He's a great golf player. So anyhow, I'd like to give my sincere condolences to Mrs. Blanquita Treble. She lost her daughter recently to a long battle against cancer. So for those of you that know her, and those of you that didn't know her, please keep her in your prayers, her and her family. We also lost a great man in our community. The mayor mentioned it. Commissioner Stewart mentioned it. It's Oscar Alisea. He was a volunteer. He, he taught us the meaning of motivation. The guy was on his final days on a wheelchair. And he was still going out there volunteering for a number of causes. He worked with the Ola Office. He also worked with the Orlando Police Department before working for the Ola Office. So we're gonna miss him greatly. And we also want to keep his family in his, in our prayers. On November 13, as Commissioner Gray said, we had the kickoff to the construction of the Semeron Corridor. Thank you Mayor for being there. Thank you Commissioners for being there for your support. Everybody, Commissioner Ings, and the other Commissioners for their support. Because we would have never been able to do this without everybody's support. The community, the Semeron Business Partnership, Department of Transportation, OUC, everybody, our staff here who have been enormously great. And I'm ever thankful for their efforts. And everybody working together in the community to achieve great things. And this is gonna be, hopefully, as we redevelop this corridor, we're gonna be bringing jobs, jobs, jobs. This is what this is all about. Moving on, thanks to District 2 Neighborhood Leaders Council members who attended our bi-monthly meeting on November 15. And special thanks to Mr. Jason Burton for his presentation. And also, I want to thank Mr. Roger Selch, he's one of our community leaders, for his presentation about residential safety. On Wednesday, November 21st, along with the Orlando Police Department, we commemorated a fallen hero by naming a District 2 street the George DeSalvia Way. I want to thank our Mayor and Commissioners for supporting this project. I want to also thank Chief Rooney, Captain Mina, Sergeant Essen, our Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Byron Brooks, John Rogers, and all the staff involved in this project. I know his family were, they were very happy. And the greatest thing of this is every time an officer travels through this way, they will remember the legacy of this great officer. And also the commitment that each, each and every one of our police officers have with our community. But every time a citizen's drive by, they will, they will be remembered that the man and woman in blue are safeguarding our citizens here in the city of Orlando. While everybody sleeps at night, these guys are out there working. So keep that in mind, please. I want to, on item C7, I want to congratulate Juan Paetes, owner of Volca Bueno. He's getting a Impact Fees Grant for some expansion on his restaurant. And that expansion includes the possibility of, not the possibility, bringing five more employees to work for the restaurant. So once again, creating jobs in the Semeron Corridor. I want to take this opportunity to thank our Chief Rooney for the accreditation. I think that's great. Our police department is, to me, is number one in the nation. But it shows. It shows by not only getting the accreditation, but by maintaining our streets safe. And I want to echo Commissioner Stewart on the recycling program. Mike Carroll, he's doing a great job, his people, the staff that are coming over to the centers and telling our people how this recycling program is working and maintaining the city of Orlando green. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. So is there a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries.
We are going to, without objection, recess the council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. We just have minutes to accept. So is there a motion to accept the meetings, minutes from the 22nd of August?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lauren, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. How about the minutes from October 24th?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. And we will, without objection, adjourn CRA meeting. And we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting without objection. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October 29?
I will move that.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. So we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting. And we will reconvene the City Council meeting. And we would have New Business next up, but the wastewater bond ordinance in item 5 of hearings ordinances on second reading needs to be enacted prior to the adoption of item number 3 on New Business. So if there's no objection, I'm gonna skip from New Business, proceed to hearings ordinances on second read, do that, and then come back to New Business. So let's go to hearings ordinances, second read, number one. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida, certain real property generally located north of East Parr Street, south of Cornell Avenue, east of Formosa Avenue, and west of Pinewood Drive comprised of .48 acres more or less. Amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as office low intensity on the city's official future land use map and designating the property as low intensity office with the Wakava overlay district on the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scripturers errors, and an effective date.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing not. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain real property generally located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Dowden Road and Randall Park Boulevard and comprised of about 69.78 acres of land from Community Activity Center to office low intensity. Rezoning the same property from Community Activity Center District 201, amending the official maps of Orlando, providing for severability, correction of scripturers errors...
providing for severability, correction of scripters errors, and an effective date.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating figure CI fourteen to be entitled City of Orlando, two thousand twelve through two thousand seventeen Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule, amending policy two point two point three zero in the capital improvements element, providing for severability and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to historic preservation, designating the building located at five hundred South Orange Avenue as an Orlando historic landmark, providing for severability, correction of scripters errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida providing for the issuance of not to exceed sixty million dollar wastewater system refunding and improvement revenue bonds, series two thousand thirteen, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding indebtedness of the city with respect to the wastewater system, financing the cost of improvements to the wastewater system, funding necessary reserves, and paying costs related thereto, providing terms upon which additional parity obligations may be issued, pledging certain net revenues of the wastewater system, and to the extent necessary, funds received from the city's utilities, services, tax for the payment of such bonds and additional parity obligations, providing for the rights, security, and remedies of the holders of such bonds and additional parity obligations, making other covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That being done, let's now move back to new business. Number one is the rescission of item A four from the October first, two thousand twelve City Council meeting regarding community service organization funding. I'm going to call on Commissioner Stewart for an explanation of this item and the accompanying item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, many of you, as I have served on for many years as Executive Director of the Christian Service Center, item A four on the October first City Council agenda was a funding agreement with the city, with the community service organizations. One of those organizations was the Christian Service Center. Even though none of those funds go toward the general operation of the center, in the past, due to my employment with the Christian Service Center, I've chosen to abstain from voting on this item in order to avoid even the perception of a conflict of interest. Somehow, I overlooked that item on October first agenda, and which I apologize and ask for your forgiveness. With that, I'd like to ask the Council to allow me the opportunity to bring up item A four, backup for reconsideration, so that I may abstain on the record and from voting on this item. The second new business item will allow us to reapprove the refunding of the community service organizations, so that there'll be no impact on the CSOs to occur. So I move to rescind the previous action on item A four from the October first agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart to rescind prior action, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to rescind, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is approved. Now we move to the second item, which is to reapprove the items that we rescinded, but allowing Commissioner Stewart to abstain from that vote, correct?
Correct.
Show more.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Gray, all discussion, all those in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and let the record reflect that Commissioner Stewart did not vote, but did in fact abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
So we will move to item number three, which is the resolution that was, that's related to the bonds that we adopted the ordinance for under number five on second reading. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
To approve with a question.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings. Okay, question?
Mayor, I'd like to know whether, what is the local participation outside? I saw Steve here earlier. What else is going on with those bonds? Is the ordinance canceled, given Steve?
In terms of, what is the team working on the issue?
Yes.
Rebecca, I know we have substantial minority participation, but I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Commissioner Rice, the financial, Rice Financial is the banker that's on that. They have a fairly substantial role in this particular bond issue.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to hearings, first read, madam, or ordinances, I guess, first read, Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida granting a petition to dissolve the Mills Park Community Development District as requested by the district's Board of Supervisors, repealing city ordinance number zero seven zero nine one seven one zero zero two that originally established the Mills Park Community Development District generally located at the northwest corner of Mills Avenue and Virginia Drive, providing for the dissolution of the Mills Park Community Development District, providing for severability, correction of scripters errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of Hibiscus Road, south of Oleander Drive, east of North Semeron Boulevard, and west of Willow Wild Place comprised of point two eight five acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as residential low intensity on the city's official future land use map, and designating the property as R one A slash A N District on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scripters errors, and an effective date.
Show more.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of State Road five twenty-eight, south of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of South Goldenrod Road, and west of Narcusi Road comprised of one point seven nine acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use map, and designating the property as industrial commercial district with the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scripters errors, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to a quasi judicial hearing. We have a recommended order from a hearing officer related to a quasi judicial appeal. I'm going to ask Dean to give us an overview of the MPB case appeal and an overview of the hearing and the recommended order. So our City Planning Division Manager, Dean Grandin. Dean, is the appellant represented here today?
I believe so. Mayor.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. As you mentioned, this is a hearing on a quasi judicial matter. It's characterized as hearing two thousand twelve, number four. It involves two cases that are related to each other, GMP Amendment Case number two thousand twelve, number ten, and PBD Amendment Case Z O N two thousand twelve, number ten. This all relates to the Nona Park property down in the southeast part of the city. The project is located at ninety-three oh six Narcusi Road, the southwest corner of Narcusi Road and Dowden Road. The property is owned PD, it's known as the Nona Park PD. This is located within District One, and you can see the site on your map. The applicant's request, and that is, the applicant is Controvest Development Partners. They have two applications, a GMP amendment to change the future land use designation from airport support high intensity to airport support district medium intensity, which would allow for residential uses on that property. Secondly, to amend the PD to replace the two hundred thousand square feet of big box retail, which was originally proposed as part of the PD with three hundred and two multifamily dwelling units to be known as the Addison. This application was appealed by a neighboring resident, Mr. Tommy Reese, and it was filed timely with regard to the GMP as well as the PD amendment itself, based on opposition to the proposed residential development on the site. Little site history here. Starting in two thousand, the City Council approved the rezoning of the site along with several nearby properties from Industrial Park IP to Airport Support District. The associated future land use designations were simultaneously amended as well. On October of two thousand seven, the Council approved the Nona Park PD to allow up to two hundred thousand square feet of big box retail, sixty-three thousand square feet of retail, thirty-six thousand square feet of office, and nineteen thousand square feet of restaurant space. This is, the site plan is approved as part of the two thousand seven PD, and you can see to the west the previously approved big box retailer on that side of the property. The balance of the site, without parcels and the retention pond, are proposed to remain the same. The future land use, the existing, as stated, is airport support district high, proposed to go to airport support district medium. This is the area of the planned development that would be amended, that would, that is the parking area and the site that was previously proposed for the big box retailer. The previously approved six out parcels, as well as a stormwater retention pond, would remain, would remain under this scenario. Some photographs of the property. At the MPB hearing, they considered the GMP amendment and the PD amendment on July seventeenth of this year. Staff recommended approval. The items were on the consent agenda of the Municipal Planning Board. The Board unanimously approved the requested amendments, and the resident of adjacent neighborhood in North Lake Park filed a timely appeal to both cases, and again, that's Mr. Tommy Reese. So this is a legislative appeal as well as a quasi judicial appeal. The legislative appeal is relating to the GMP amendments to change a future land use map, and as such, they are legislative and are to be conducted according to a standard public hearing procedure. Per provisions of Chapter Two, Article fourteen of the City Code, persons dissatisfied with legislative board recommendation may appeal the decision directly to the City Council. City Council may vote to approve or deny such an appeal. As mentioned, it's also a quasi judicial appeal. PD amendments are quasi judicial and are to be conducted, subject to the Florida Supreme Court ruling in the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County versus Snyder. Per provisions of Chapter Two of the City Code, persons dissatisfied with a quasi judicial board recommendation may be entitled to de novo hearing before an independent hearing officer, and that's what occurred hearing. The hearing officer provides a recommended order based on the competent and substantial evidence to City Council. The City Council, in its wisdom, on September tenth of this year, approved this as a combined appeal and referred the future land use map amendment, as well as the regular quasi judicial matter, to the hearing officer assigned to the PD zoning case. The hearing officer held the hearing on October fifth of this year regarding both appeals. During that hearing, all parties presented material into the record. Subsequent to that hearing, the hearing officer issued a recommended order. The petitioner has since filed an exception to the recommended order. The recommended order from the hearing officer is to, for the City Council to accept the planning staff reports and recommendation approval both of Nona Park GMP Amendment, GMP twelve, two thousand twelve, number ten, and Nona Park PD Amendment, Z O N two thousand twelve, number ten. Staff recommends adoption of the recommended order from the hearing officer to include the original staff recommendations, including the conditions as originally recommended by staff. Of note, one of the conditions reads, "All proposed buildings and interfaces of the Addison shall be required to undergo a specific parcel master plan review by, before the Southeast Town Designer Review Committee," and that would happen at a future date. So the action required by the City Council, you can either, you can approve or deny the legislative appeal. Denial of the appeal would allow staff to prepare an ordinance to amend the future land use map. Upholding the appeal would effectively nullify the zoning request, because it would not be consistent with the adopted future land use designation that you've approved. For the quasi judicial appeal, you can adopt the recommended order, adopt the recommended order with changes, or direct staff to prepare a revised order. Council shall not change any findings of fact reached by the hearing officer without stating its reasons for such change. And finally, if Council directs staff to prepare a revised order, the revised order shall be transmitted to the parties and presented to the City Council within forty-five days, forty-five calendar days from today. I'm here to answer any questions. I believe the next step in this process is to hear from both the appellant and the applicant.
Are there questions of Dean at this point? And I think the appropriate order is for the appellant or petitioner, followed by the applicant, and then Dean to close the loop.
I'd be glad to.
Man, is it ten minutes per person, ten minutes, or Dean?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to take the petitioner or the appellant, then we'll take the applicant, and then city staff, and each of you will have ten minutes, if you can, so representative for the petitioner.
Yes, sir. My name is Tommy Reese. I am a resident, owner of, live at eight five nine six North Lake Parkway in Orlando, three two eight two seven. Thank you for having me here, Mr. Mayor and distinguished City Council. I have a presentation to, that hopefully everyone has a copy of that that was passed out, and it should also be on the screen as well.
It's on the screen, and we have a hard copy.
Thank you. I'm a resident of the North Lake Park neighborhood in Lake Nona, and I am, I've been appealing the, the GMP and PD amendments that were mentioned previously, and I wanted to give you a little bit more information about the appeal, information about why we're appealing and so forth, and that's in this presentation. So on the second page of the presentation, it says, "Nona Park GMP Amendment." There's a list of, of things that I have listed here to oppose the, the amendment. There was no market analysis, there's missing feedback from the public, missing analysis of impacts to schools, missing analysis of traffic inside North Lake Park, missing analysis of alternative property usage, and that is on the Nona Park GMP amendment. It's also the case with the Nona Park PD amendment as well, and both of these were the staff recommendations from the city. Market analysis, a brief definition of market analysis, this wasn't done for those amendments for the GMP or for the PD amendment, but as you can see, it's important that market analysis shows the, you know, the reasons why apartment complex or changes should be made, but that wasn't done in this case. So, so we did a, did some market analysis ourselves. We found relatively close to the proposed Addison Apartments, there are four thousand fifty-seven existing apartment complexes. There's one directly across the street, four hundred and twenty unit Camden La Vina Apartments that was just built in the spring. There's also point eight miles away, North Lake Park Apartments. There's the Reserve at Beachline Apartments, which is roughly about a mile away. Legends of Lake Nona Apartments, which is roughly two miles away, and then other apartments as well, they're within three or four, five miles. They sub total four thousand fifty-seven apartment units just within those eleven apartments that, that we found just by driving around the neighborhood. Doing a search on the internet, we found thirty-five apartment complexes on South Semeron in the three two eight two two zip code. With the thirty-five apartments close by as well, this represents many thousands of units that are reasonably close to that apartment complex, the Addison Apartment. We also looked at the Hunter Creek area, zip code three two eight three seven, and found seventeen apartment complexes there within Hunter's Creek, which is there within Hunter's Creek, which is relatively close by in, in the other direction, and that represents another several thousand apartments. Just looking at the average number of apartments that we did the analysis on with the 4,057, 11 apartment complexes, that averages out to roughly 360 units for those apartment complexes. If you, if you look at the 35 apartment complexes I previously mentioned, and the 17 I'm mentioning here, and you multiply those out by the 360 units, you get close to 18,000 units, relatively close to this apartment complex that's being proposed. And there was no market analysis done for this apartment complex, for that GMP and PD amendments, so that's why we started to, to look into this a little bit more. There are also more apartments being planned in Randall Park, which is about roughly two miles away from where the proposed apartments are. A 462 unit Colonial Grand being planned right down the street. There's another apartment complex that's being zoned in East Park, which is just roughly about a mile, mile and a half away from the apartment complex. There are apartment complexes planned in Village Walk, which is very close to Medical City, and to Eagle Creek, which are also close to Medical City. These are very large complexes that are being planned as well. There were no mention of these in any of the GMP or PD plans either. We looked at MLS, there are several houses for rent, we, we found 54 houses for rent just within a close proximity of Medical City.
You're halfway through your time, so just use it accordingly.
Thank you. And they are all comparable in, competing in the rental market as well for these houses. There are 611 homes for rent around Medical City, I looked that up in hotpads.com, and those are all around Medical City, and this was all done as of October 5th, when we had the appeals hearing. Examples of commuter demographics, I spoke with the principal of Lake Nona Middle School, and she highlighted that her staff, she has roughly about 120 staff, many of them commute from outside of even Orlando and the county. Thirty percent of them roughly commute from other areas to Lake Nona Middle School, just to give you an example of, there will be commuters coming into Lake Nona. They're coming from Cocoa Beach, Maitland, Windermere, Lake County, Bravard County, so they're coming from many different areas, just as an example. Also as an example, Principal McCoy at the Lake Nona Middle School said that 70% of her staff commute locally from around Orlando and other places, so they're not just located in Lake Nona, but they're coming from Hunter's Creek, or they're coming from Avalon Park, they're coming from other neighborhoods in Orlando as well, so this, this is another factor in consideration of, of the housing in, in Lake Nona and the... We also looked at the Southeast Sector Plan, the city Southeast, Southeast Sector Plan Policy 4.1.6. Development shall conform to a land use plan which promotes a positive job housing balance, provides for integrated mixture of land uses, and featuring diverse residential uses. It is the city's intention that the percentage of multifamily units within the plan or areas shall not exceed 40%. We have been working on trying to understand that better, but we, we didn't see anything within the staff report or any, any other publication that we had access to that showed us what the percentages are and how this would affect the percentages as well. So this is another example of not having the, the market, market analysis within the staffing plan for the amendments that were mentioned. Also in the staffing plan, it said that there was no feedback from the public, but the staffing plan was missing feedback from the public. There was actually 273 signatures on petitions that are opposed to the apartments and, and these amendment changes. Some of the samples of feedback are here in the following slides in the pages. The, also the, the petition is in Appendix B at the end of the presentation as well. Impacts to schools in Lake Nona. In 2011, a relief school provides relief for the Northlake Park and Vista Lakes schools. We're over capacity in our Northlake Park schools, and that school has no additional room for portables and so forth because of an agreement with the YMCA there. And the Addison apartments calculation, based on the school district's calculation, would add additional 60 students to, to the area, and there's, there's no, you know, additional room for those students in Northlake Park or in the middle school as well. So in the following pages, you can see the, the school impacts, the descriptions there. Increased traffic in Northlake Park neighborhood. There's a photo of the traffic jams that we have in Northlake Park neighborhood on Northlake Parkway, and in the staffing reports, there was no analysis of the traffic within the neighborhood, there was analysis for traffic outside the neighborhood, but not within the neighborhood. The next slide, you can see the, the traffic, and the red, red line on the screen represents the traffic of the picture that I just showed. Also, an alternative route within the neighborhood is also outlined in red, showing you the traffic that would impact the neighborhood as well. Alternate property usage, there was no discussion about the different use of the property. It was really just either big box, retail, or apartments. However, zoning can be done to provide additional offices, which would support the theme for the city to provide additional jobs or, or business within the area. I know many residents are interested in, in working locally. So business, business offices, there will be no additional students impacting the school system, no additional high density housing within the neighborhood with offices. Possible mixes of office and retail, support for small businesses in Lake Nona. So these are things that were not discussed in the, the staffing plan.
That's your time, if you'd wrap it up.
Okay, thank you, sir. So just to, to go back to the very first slide, there are several reasons why we're interested in, in not having the apartment complexes built in, in Lake Nona in that location. One is that we don't believe that there's justification for it, there was no market analysis, as, as I talked about. Said in the staffing plan that there was no public feedback, but there's definitely a lot of public feedback, so the staffing plan was missing the public feedback. There's, there wasn't really an analysis of the impact of the schools. I know that there had said that the school district was responsible for that, but there was nothing that came back and, and really showed that, and, and as concerned parents, we're all very, very interested in that. Missing analysis of traffic inside the Northlake Park neighborhood, and there was no analysis there. And then just the, missing analysis of just the alternatives to this property. We're only given the choice of whether it is a big box retail or a apartment complex, but, but we believe that, you know, there should be other options that would help support the neighborhood and also align with what the city's vision is as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from the applicant.
Hi, good afternoon. James Johnston with Shuts &amp; Bowen, 300 South Orange Avenue, on behalf of the applicant. We appreciate your time this afternoon. We, we would obviously request that you follow the hearing officer and approve these applications as he has recommended. We had a long hearing before the hearing officer. This was a de novo hearing, applicant had the opportunity to present whatever evidence he could. It was his burden, the hearing officer found that he did not meet the burden, he did not meet his burden, he did not introduce any competent substantial evidence in support of, of his position. The only competent substantial evidence introduced at that hearing that's in the record was the, was introduced by the city and the applicant, that includes the city's professional staff recommendation, staff reports, and the actual testimony from the professional staff. And we think, you know, the, the hearing officer got it right. The, the petitioner, he's introduced a lot of issues here today relating to traffic, land planning issues, things of that nature, technical issues. He did not introduce any professional planners, transportation engineers, anything of that nature. Only thing introduced was lay witness testimony from him and a couple of residents, and this was recognized by the hearing officer in his recommended order, that the only competent substantial evidence in the record was, again, that introduced by the applicant and the city. This application is essentially down zoning. We're taking property that is Airport Support District High, changing it to Airport Support District Medium. It's a PD, but the underlying zoning currently is ASD2, it will be ASD1, and we are taking the specific use under the PD from a 200,000 square foot big box retail to 302 multifamily homes. This will, your professional staff found that these changes were compatible with the comp plan, with your zoning code, with state comp plan, regional planning council, all of those things that they look at, they found that these applications complied with those. There was also a stat, a transportation study done, which recognized that there will be significantly less tra, trips generated from this property based on the changed use. In fact, it's anywhere from 30 to 40% of the trips that would be generated based on the existing big box retail use. As far as the school issues, one of the staff conditions that's in there that we're agreeable to that would be part of this recommendation, is that the school issues must be worked out, a CEA done with the school district to mitigate any impacts prior to approval of the, of the zoning ordinances and the GMP ordinances, and that is currently in process with the school district, and obviously, we will have to comply with that before this approval can ever go forward. You know, in conclusion, we've enjoyed working with staff on this. We think your professional planning staff did a great job in analyzing these applications. They recommended approval of both, that was the only evidence, competent evidence in the record, and so we would just ask you to follow the recommendation of your professional planning staff, the hearing officer who heard hours of testimony, as well as the MPB in recommending approval of these applications. I'm here to answer any questions, I also have the property owner as well, but again, we just appreciate your time this afternoon.
Questions? Thank you. Kyle, what's coming up?
Good after, excuse me, good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners, Kyle Shepherd, Assistant City Attorney, and I represented planning staff at the quasi judicial hearing that was held on October, October 5th. It was a long hearing, it was about a three hour hearing. At all levels of review, at the planning staff level, in front of the city's TRC, in front of the city's municipal planning board, and in front of the hearing officer, at all levels of review, the recommendation to you has been approval of both of these applications. And so staff is here today again to recommend approval to you, not just your professional planning staff, but also your city attorney's office. Keep in mind that you have two applications before you today, and they each have two different standards of review. The comp plan is a legislative matter, which means you have a very high level of discretion. You can make any decision that is what we call fairly debatable, or not arbitrary and capricious. The zoning amendment is different, it's a quasi judicial application, so you have to make your decision based on competent and substantial evidence. The city put on testimony of three highly qualified professional planners. Kalander Drones was the staff, staff analysis for the comprehensive plan amendment, Michael Alpetion for the zoning, and then Gus Castro of the Transportation Department did the transportation analysis. The petitioner put on two witnesses, all nearby residents, all testified as non-expert lay witnesses giving testimony regarding the perceived impacts of the proposed development on traffic schools and so on. Ms. Jones testified that the ASD medium, the Airport Support Medium District creates a better land use buffer to the residential uses to the south. Okay, so in her professional opinion, she said that actually ASD medium would make more sense as a transition from the Airport Support High Intensity to the north to the residential uses along the south. She also testified that the proposed development would have substantially fewer transportation impacts on the transportation network rather than more. Finally, Ms. Jones also testified that in her professional opinion, the proposed development was consistent with the state comprehensive plan, and also the Central Florida Regional Policy Plan, and also the city Southeast Sector Plan. The zoning official reviewing it, Ms. Alpetion testified that the proposed rezoning would be a more appropriate, and a more appropriate land use, and have fewer land use impacts on the surrounding properties, including the residential uses to the south. She testified that the estimated trip generation of the currently approved big box retailer is almost 6,000 ADTs, average daily trips, 6,000 per day, and 474 of those would be during the peak PM traffic hour. While the estimated trip generation for the proposed 302 unit apartment complex is only 2,000 average daily trips, with only 187 of those coming during the peak PM travel hour. This testimony was also confirmed by Gus Castro in the city's Transportation Department. So all the testimony that was heard on the record said that actually traffic impacts would be substantially, substantially less. Ms. Alpetion finalized her testimony by saying that in her professional opinion, the proposed rezoning was consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, of course, assuming that you approved the comp, comp plan amendment today. Based on all that record, the hearing officer issued a recommended order finding that the petitioner provided no competent substantial evidence at all into the record that, to deny the land use applications, and in fact, that the only competent and substantial evidence provided into the record was submitted by the applicant and the city. For those reasons, your professional planning staff, the city's TRC, the citizen advisors of the MPB, the hearing officer, and the city attorney's office all recommends approval of the GMP and the zoning application. Couple quick rebuttal points on the presentation you heard today. You heard mention of a market analysis. Our comprehensive plan does not require a market analysis, it doesn't require a, a market study. There is one future land use map designation that the expansion or creation of which has an optional market study, but it does not apply to this future land use map designation. Secondly, on school capacity, keep in mind that the city of Orlando has an interlocal agreement with Orange County Public Schools that requires an applicant like this to mitigate their impacts on public schools by negotiating a capacity enhancement agreement with OCPS. That has to be finished before the ordinance comes to you for first reading, amending the future land use map amendment. So that has a, a mechanism to resolve itself prior to you hearing the first reading of a comp plan amendment. With that, if you have any questions, otherwise, we recommend that you deny the appeal and approve the two land use orders.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is my district, I'd like to make a few comments and then offer a motion for the council to consider. First of all, I'd like to, to thank Mr. Reese for, for getting involved. I mean, you, you don't go to this amount of effort if you don't care about the neighborhood, so thank you very much for getting involved and, and doing what you think is right. Also like to thank the landowners and the applicant for their patience going through the appeal process. They've got a big investment involved, and I thought they had gotten the right answer at the MPB, and they've had to wait for a few months, so I want to thank them for their, their patience. Before we went to MPB, I want to make a point, with the help of staff, we held not one but two community meetings, certainly advertised per our requirements of the city, but we also tried to get the word out through the community newsletters, et cetera. And I attended both of those meetings. We had 20 to 30 residents that attended those, so we did try to reach out, and the applicant was kind enough to host both of those and share their development plans, as they know them today, with the neighbors. Certainly after I went to MPB and, and we got into the appeal process... Certainly after I went to MPB and, and we got into the appeal process, by design, I stepped back as the, as the commissioner, as I'm supposed to, to, to make sure that I didn't have any undue influence in that. And we've heard today, good points by both sides. That's what we're living with in District 1 right now, we've got a lot of, of new development. What's good development to some is bad development to others. And so I recognize that it's not an easy process, but on balance, I would say that after stepping back and watching this, I feel like the appellate got a good hearing, was able to produce the, the reasons that they did not agree with the MPB hearing. However, I, I am going to make a motion that we deny the appeal and accept the MPB's recommendation, because again, I think the process worked as we have it designed, and if we need to redesign that, maybe that's something to talk about. But right now, I'm making a motion that...
I will second your motion, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Mayor, point of order...
Motion and a second.
Mayor, point of order, it's to deny the appeal and adopt the recommendation of the hearing officer, isn't that appropriate?
Kyle, is it to adopt the action of the MPB?
I think it's the hearing officer.
Or the hearing officer, or both?
Probably the best motion would be to approve the recommended orders of the hearing officer.
Okay.
And by the way, that would be approving both land use orders.
Okay, so his motion was to deny the appeal and then adopt the, the hearing officer's recommended order which approves both of the amendments.
Yes, sir, that'd be in order.
So moved.
And a second.
Yes.
All right, further discussion?
I have a...
Okay.
Mayor, if you don't mind. I'm gonna say to Commissioner Gray, as a District 1 Commissioner, what I had to say a number of times to the previous Commissioner. I've been here 14 years, and before that, I served at municipal planning board for about five or six years. And knowing from 1980, 80s and early 90s, the Southeast project has been evolving, and it's as big as Winter Park. So there's gonna be a lot of development, and, and it's like Commissioner Gray, who is an expert in real estate and all, gets it. When it's bad, we've, in the past, had very good municipal planning board, and today, Scott Shigalstey went on the board, really good people on that board. I question some other boards, but that one is usually pretty good. I listened to the Commissioner, what they also know, whether he's in it or a step back. Mayor and council, I am always concerned, and I think this gentleman, the, the applicant, but when I read suspicious terminology to me, and I do look for competent evidence by petitioners, when people come and say, "If you build these apartments, it's gonna increase crime in my neighborhood." What do they mean? It's gonna increase trances. Who the hell gonna walk way down to Lake Nona? Decrease property values. I am just in awe of those little code words and what it means. I support this Commissioner, and I support it, I have had my eyes on this project for years and years and years, and when something bad comes along, and we can taste it, we can smell it, we can measure it, I'm gonna look to the Commissioner. But when I hear these code words, they're to scare everybody, and it's not always evidence of anything except, "This neighborhood moves in, there won't nobody else around." Well, there's tons of acreage out there, it's gonna be developed. And that's the way it is. It's just, I just find it just so intriguing when I look to those little words. I just heard a lot of those silly words during the election, so I support you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray, or Commissioner Linham and Commissioner Gray, and I would echo Commissioner Gray's comments to both the appellate and the petitioners. We appreciate your patience, and we appreciate you utilizing the process that's been set up, set up. It doesn't appear you're gonna be successful, but we do appreciate having concerned citizens that interact with their government and have their voices heard. That being said, I happen to think this is probably a pretty good use, Commissioner Gray. We're gonna be dealing with the East Airfield property and how that gets developed...
I've heard that, I've heard that.
And what intensities and uses are made there, and we've been concerned, part of the issue is how to buffer the existing North Lake neighborhood from whatever uses may occur, and this seems like a pretty good residential buffer to whatever's gonna be on the north side of Dowden Road, so it's kinda the first piece of the puzzle.
Agreed.
Commissioner Shin?
And Commissioner Gray, please accept that correction with the, it's what it was intended, because I, I'm the quasi judicial queen, because I'm, I'm usually the one that has all of them, so...
Thank you very much, thank you.
I'm a little versed in the, in the process, thank you.
I think you got it right, let me have lawyers and...
Close enough.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll, I'll favor the motion indicates, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. I appreciate those of you who joined us in council chambers, and those who viewed us from home or on the web.